You could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Russell Seeling. I live at 38 Oxford Street in Springfield. And thank you for the opportunity of being able to speak here. I'm going to talk about investment property valuation practices. This is part of a saga that is going on for a long time. As some of you know, I am a Department of Revenue certified assessor, although I have never practiced as one. For many years, I've also been an owner of investment properties in the city, so I know the issue of valuations from both sides. As an owner of investment properties, I received a number of information requests, 38Ds, asking for income and expense information for my properties, which I complied with for most years. The assessors use that information to determine a market value for my properties in order to make an accurate assessment of those properties. Part of the 38D legislation allows the assessors to enact fines against owners and lesses of investment properties who do not return information requests. And those fines are an inducement to the owners to provide that information. In Springfield, there are approximately 1,100 parcel owners who do not return the information requests, depriving the assessors of important information that would help set accurate valuations for their parcels. The city of Boston routinely sends out reminder notices to those recalcitrant owners, and if there's still no response, they enact the penalties that are provided by the legislation. So there are two additional benefits to the city to enact those penalties. One, the additional revenue is estimated at somewhere over $200,000 a year. That would be small change, perhaps, in the total budget, but it would fill in some nice corners somewhere. And the other is, and more importantly, it would enhance the knowledge of the incomes and expenses of investment properties that would allow the assessors to more accurately value those parcels. The city's CAFO, TJ Plant, said at the mayor's budget presentation last week that he would be talking to the assessors about enacting those penalties. And I encourage his office to vigorously pursue the issue. I believe the city owes it to those of us whose properties are assessed at fair cash value and who pay our taxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This closes our public speak-out portion of the meeting. We will reconvene at 7 o'clock for our regular meeting.
We will begin the city council regular meeting. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen. Absent. Counselor Rook.
Present.
Present. Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Present.
Present. Counselor Ash. Here. Counselor Twigs. Absent. Counselor Shea.
Present.
Present. Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present. Counselor Hurst. Present. Counselor Bud Williams.
Here.
Here. Counselor Ramos.
Present. The council and our guests, please rise for a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, just a brief reminder. Please, all cell phones on silent mode. First item on the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
The first item is the April revenues versus expenditures report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors. Tonight, you have the April revenue and expenditure report. As you can see, our revenue is far outpacing our expenditures, which is normal this time of year. These numbers will get a lot closer in the next two months as spending will ramp up, and most of our revenue has come in.
Any questions or comments from the council? All right, seeing none. Are those in favor of receiving the reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it? Thank you. Are there any reports of committee? Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the meeting that we had with the Council on Development Committee met prior to this meeting, on the item referred to committee on the PVTA landing pads, the PVTA wants to install 143 ADA compliant landing pads at high readership bus stops in Springfield. The representatives from the PVC PVPC, Planning Commission, David Elwin and Carolyn Hart Lucian, who's the interim director of the PVTA, and Alex Forrest, they gave an excellent presentation and actually cleared up a lot of the questions that the city council had about this particular issue. I had a totally different idea of what it is that they were trying to do, but they are trying to actually make it easier for their ridership, particularly people with disability or young mothers with strollers or people that have any kind of a mobility issue. And as a result of that, Counselor Gomez, myself, and Counselor Fenton, who were at the meeting, were in support. And they pointed out that they are doing this because they have funding from Mass Stop. And there is, of course, a timeframe for this project to get started. The grant expires in September. And I was disappointed we could not vote on it tonight, but it will be coming up next week on the agenda that's posted. But this was well done. And they pointed out that these pads, which are concrete and where the bus stops are, they will not be putting them anywhere where they are eliminating stops. That's a whole different discussion. We'll be having another meeting, a different meeting on the proposed changes and the stops to PVTA. So we thought it was an excellent, excellent explanation of what they are trying to do. And on my committee, we all felt that it was a good move for the city. And we do hope that when it comes before the full council next week, that it will receive the entire unanimous vote of the city council. I believe that... Nope, they left. They'll be back next week. So very, very good meeting. Good project for the city.
Are those in favor of accepting the reports, say aye.
Did you want to?
Opposed? Do the ayes have it?
Yeah.
Are there any other reports of committee? Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to talk about my meeting on Wednesday, April 26th. It was Economic Development Meeting. I met with Mr. Shahabian and his lawyer, attorney, Robert Kraus. And the meeting was about rent control when it came to mobile homes. And Mr. Shahabian, he owns three out of the four lots. And the meeting was just between myself and the two gentlemen, so I didn't have a quorum. But we're looking forward to having another meeting to discuss more into the matter of rent control when it comes to these mobile homes.
Thank you. Are those in favor of receiving the reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it? Are there any other reports of committee? Seeing none. Items 2 through 5, Mr. Clerk.
Item 2 is a petition from MGM for the widening of Bliss Street, the creation of MGM Public Way, the widening of Howard Street, and the widening of Union Street. Items 3 through 4 are petitions from... I'm sorry, 3 through 5 are petitions from Columbia Gas for the installation of underground gas mains and gas facilities at various locations throughout the city. Items 6 through 8 are clerical errors. Those were items that had been voted on by this council at the last city council meeting, and therefore, no action needs to be taken.
Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. With respect to item number 2, unless Mr. Signoli has something else to say or if there's any representatives of MGM here, it was my understanding after the last meeting that MGM and the Law Department would like to table this matter until further discussions can be had about the taking of MGM Way as a public right-of-way. So do you have any different information on that?
The only discussion point I had with Attorney Pacula was his question to us about the city accepting it. And basically, it's the same as doing a subdivision. We wouldn't accept the road until it was built and completed, and then we would accept it as a formal right-of-way and accepted roadway.
I would just make a motion that we refer item 2 to committee, just because I know there were concerns, both on the part of MGM and the Law Department, over how to do that, whether it would be a private way or a public way. And particularly, they're concerned about air rights and easement rights over the sidewalk for signage and also for potentially a sign that would go over the street. And without the benefit of those folks here tonight, I think that we should continue to wait to hear from them. So that's a motion to committee for number 2.
Motion made by Counselor Fenton to send item number 2 to the Casino Oversight Committee, seconded by Counselor Gomez. Are those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it? Good evening.
Good evening, councilors. Items 3, 4, and 5 are petitions by Columbia Gas. Warwick Street, Mary Coburn and Stafford Street, abandoning existing pipes and replacing with new pipes. Warwick Street is one street. Mary Coburn is one street. Stafford is about four streets in that area. And then it also serves the housing complex that is off of Stafford Street.
Are there any questions from the council? Counselor Gomez.
So we're talking about Linden Tower. That's the housing that you're talking about on Stafford?
Off of Stafford, yes.
Not nursery, but more down the building?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Are those in favor of accepting the petitions 3 through 5, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it? So 6 through 8 have been taken off of... They were added to the agenda by error, and so we'll move on to item number 9, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 9 is a donation to the Springfield City Library in the amount of $210.
Are those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it? Item number 10, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 10 is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed for the sale of a parcel on Orange Street.
Hi. Robert Demuse is appearing for the Office of Housing City of Springfield. Item 10 is a demolished property for a vacant... It's a vacant lot on formerly 399 Orange Street. Through our butter lot program, the butter has applied and been approved to purchase the property with the council's blessing.
Counselor Williams.
Thanks, Bobby. Just in terms of the square footage on this lot?
5,004 square foot, Counselor.
Would this be considered a buildable lot?
It is a buildable lot. 5,000 is 50 by 100. You're okay. So they're four feet over a buildable lot.
I don't know. Along the line, I don't know. A few meetings ago, maybe a few years ago, it was said, and I want to make sure I say it correctly, that these are butter auctions or butter bids were because these lots weren't buildable. That's not the case?
The butter lot program originally was for lots assessed under $25,000. I believe that's been altered now to $35,000. This particular lot is a 5,000-square-foot lot, which is a typical lot in Springfield, 50 by 100. It formally held a six-family unit. There's a six-family unit on either side of it along the parcel of Orange between Allen and White Street. Very dense area, no on-street parking. The building that was demolished was a...
I understand. I know. Once it's demolished, after two years, they got to come back before the council, get a special permit to do whatever. I understand all that.
Yep.
But it is a buildable lot.
It is a buildable lot, correct.
So if someone came with a plan and came before this body, it will be up to this body to decide whether or not to accept.
Initially, and then it will go to the planning board, correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear, because I was under the impression that these are butter auctions were not buildable lots. That was early on. Maybe if the administration is going in a different direction, I'd like to know.
The majority of the lots are unbuildable lots, but the threshold, if you will, is a lot that's assessed at less than $35,000 is eligible for the program. Over $35,000, which would be a marketable, buildable lot, wouldn't be eligible for the butter lot program.
Who makes that decision?
The assessors are the ones who assess it. Again, this particular lot, very congested area. It'd be tough for a...
I get all that. I understand.
Market developer to come in. So I assume that's where the value...
The way I see these lots going up in Springfield now, I don't know about that. I've seen some very tight lots on Boston Road and Wilberham Road. They're like this.
Sure.
So, okay. I have some further questions on another piece of land. Thank you.
Counselor Shea.
Because I'm familiar with that part of Orange Street, and I know that there was a six-family that burnt down, I believe.
Correct.
And there's a six... Now, when this individual acquires this lot, is it going to be restricted to parking or...
Absolutely.
Because it needs parking there. But I would not want to approve this if it was going to wind up a buildable lot where we could either, A, put another six-family in there, which I don't think we could now, or to combine it with one next door and take that down and put an even larger rental complex in there. So is there a restriction in this deed that it's limited to parking?
The restriction in the deed will be to do an approval-not-required plan, an A&R plan, which will combine the two lots into one. So the existing structure already there. So he would need city approval to take that down, put a new one. But further, the restriction is to use the parcel as a side yard, parking spots in a side yard. That's his proposal.
Agreed.
And it's restricted as a deed restriction in perpetuity.
Because if we take that line out and make it one lot, the square footage of that one lot, subject to how that restriction is worded, one could put a larger building in there.
Subject to city approval. I don't...
Well, depending on how things are going. I mean, I would rather see it that it could not be subject to city approval, used for anything other than parking. So is that restriction strong enough to prevent this from being done down the road?
That restriction is strong enough, because in order to take that restriction off, that will go with the property, no matter who owns it. They would have to come back to the city to release that restriction.
And if we did not take the line out, if we left it as two separate lots but put the restriction of parking on that empty lot, wouldn't that be a stronger way of doing it? I mean, what's the advantage to the owner of combining it other than he's now got a pretty large lot to play with?
It would increase the square footage of the lot and the value of the lot. There is an advantage to the owner. It reinforces the restriction, because when I now take the parcel I live on and the parcel next door, combine them as one, I'm not able to add another structure without going to, you know, going through all the motions. And the biggest motion would be to get that restriction released.
Well, I think that's what I'm driving at.
Okay.
I want to make it more difficult to do exactly what you outlined, not easier.
Right, correct.
So I would think that if we left this as two lots, transfer the property and keep it as one lot, and with that restriction, that is a better safeguard to the city than what's being proposed, at least in my opinion.
And Counselor, I wasn't in the design phases of the program. I kind of inherited it. But I know that the purpose of combining the lots is so that it's one property. It will now be assessed as one property. There won't be, you know, South Side Orange Street and 401 Orange Street. And by combining them, that really does put the onus on the owner. It'd be nearly impossible to add another... Well, you can't add another parcel. You just can't. You've got a restriction where it's only to be used as a side yard.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none. Are those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it? Roll call.
On approving the transfer, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen. Absent. Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh. Yes. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ash. Yes. Counselor Twigs. Absent. Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient. Order is approved. Items 11 and 12, Mr. Clerk.
Item 11 is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed for the sale of a parcel on Clark Street. Item number 12 is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed for the sale of a parcel on Bowdoin Street.
Again, butter lot parcels. The Clark Street parcel is a fairly large parcel. It certainly is a buildable lot. Clark Street is in the heart of where the tornado went through in the Six Corners neighborhood. It's an extremely narrow street, very congested. The proposed purchaser, house was totally demolished, rebuilt, brand-new. Her family used to own the lot in question. She has maintained it since and is very excited to obtain it and leave it just as a side yard with gardens and off-street parking.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, Bobby, what's the square footage?
10,000 square foot, Counselor.
10,000?
Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none. Are those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye. Opposed? Do the ayes have it? Roll call.
On approving item 11, order authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed for the sale of a parcel on Clark Street, Counselor Edwards. Yes. Counselor Allen. Absent. Counselor Rook. Yes. Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh. Yes. Counselor Marcus Williams. Yes. Counselor Ash. Yes. Counselor Twigs. Absent. Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient. Order is approved. For item number 12, are those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye. Opposed? Do the ayes have it? Roll call.
On authorizing the order, Counselor Edwards. Yes.
It's 11, right?
Counselor Edwards.
This is 12?
I believe, my colleagues, you have a request from the McKnight CDC requesting that this be sent to committee. There's some concern about the transfer. I was hoping, Phil, maybe you can answer the question, because there was a couple of questions. Did everybody receive a copy of this document and have a chance to read it?
Yes.
Square footage on this lot is?
This is actually two lots, Counselor. It's 62 Bowdoin, which is 10,005. And then right behind it would be a landlocked parcel, 6,825 square feet.
So in fact, it is a buildable lot. Ladies and gentlemen, you do have a letter from the CDC requesting to just go to committee. I'm not opposed to it going to committee, but I did make outreach to the president of the McKnight Neighborhood Council, who said that this was vetted at their neighborhood council and that it was by approval. But I don't have any document to support that, so I'm not going to oppose it going to committee. I don't think it would cause any harm. And maybe Mr. Demuse can speak on whether the delay would cause any harm. But I did get a little bit more history about the circumstances and situation on the lot. And this was a parcel that you might have heard of in the recent past. It had a beautiful Victorian house, sat vacant for more than a little bit of time. The city was unable to market it. Eventually, it was demolition by neglect. The city chose to tear it down. This is where the lot is now. It is, in fact, a buildable lot. But I believe there's some question as to whether or not there is anybody with the resources at this time and the interest. Because I know there's interest, but do they have the resources in order to do it? So maybe you can explain a little bit the details of the process that led to it becoming, being offered to the butters and then the will of the committee, whether or not it should go to the committee or not.
Sure. I believe this was a fire. It was a long vacant house, as you said. I believe there was a fire. It was relative emergency demolition. The house came down. Shortly after the city demolished the house, we've got an inquiry from the neighbor requesting to acquire the property through the butter lot program. As is procedure, all the butters... There's three butters in this case, where mailed information packets and applications. All three butters applied. The City Butter Lot Committee had met on August 22nd, I believe, to vet these applications. There was one application from in the rear... Of the rear... I'm sorry. There was three applicants for the rear parcel, and that's the landlocked parcel in the back. There's another parcel to the right of it. That owner... One of the requirements of being approved for the butter lot committee is not to have been foreclosed in tax title or the city taking your property for non-payment of taxes. That particular owner, 15 times over the years, the city has actually taken his property. So that application was denied. The other applicant was a church that kind of sits perpendicular to there. They proposed to pave an area for parking and leave a grassy area for retreat and meditation and prayer. Currently, this longstanding church has parking back there. There's a fence that separates it. But they have parking there, and for years, they've just parked... They haven't paved it. They've just parked on the grass. So without paving their own property, the committee decided that there probably weren't the resources to pave that. And also, the benefit to the neighborhood, a parking lot versus the third applicant, which is the neighbor to the immediate right, I believe it's 70 Bowdoin, young couple that has a house, I believe it's 70, proposed to... On the rear parcel, there is a modular home that's sat there for at least 10 years, but I've got to say many more. It's dilapidated. I've walked through it. It's wide open. It's sinking on the trailer. Their proposal was to remove the contract, to remove the modular home, fence the area, landscape it, gardens, and keep it as green space, similar to the property directly across the street, which was obtained through the butter lot. And the lady has what she calls a butterfly garden there. She also wrote... That neighbor wrote a long, lengthy recommendation for her. The landscaper wrote a recommendation or a certification that he's implied, that they've hired him to maintain the lot and that he would continue to maintain the lot. I also reached out to a couple of the McKnight Council members. As we approached this meeting of the butter lot committee, we invited the McKnight Council and forwarded them all three applications. We invited Counselor Twigs. Neither of them were able to make the meeting. We also asked them to send a letter. We didn't receive a letter from either of them. In talking with the McKnight Neighborhood Council, they think it just kind of slipped through. It didn't actually make it to an agenda. It was on their June agenda regarding the demolition, but it didn't make it beyond that. We hadn't got any feedback from Counselor Twigs. The committee voted unanimously to award it to the owner occupants next door. The owner occupants also, excuse me, have provided a contract to remove that. They're contracted in August to remove that modular home. And again, the restriction will be, it'll be one parcel, no construction, and they will have to fence it within a year.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. It sounds like from the explanation that there's still some people that have not had input into this particular issue. This was discussed during our public speak. We've all received the letter. Usually, when we receive a letter from an organization that has concerns, we usually, as a courtesy, send it to committee. I don't sense any urgency with having it discussed further to make sure everybody in the neighborhood is on board and satisfied. So, I'm going to second Counsel Edward's recommendation to send it to committee.
Most of me, but Counsel Walsh. Seconded by Counsel Edwards. Counsel Williams, under motion.
Under motion, and I'm going to support the motion. And I think, thank you, Counselwoman Edwards and Walsh for slowing this process. Now, I think this body has to get a hand on this, like we did the historical demo, because this is going to be 16,000 square feet, if my math is correct, Bobby. 16,000, and you're not going to build anything.
That's a lot.
Whether or not someone could build it, I don't know. But that's a lot of, that's a lot of land.
It's a very deep lot, Counselor, yes.
Bobby, I ride around the city every day. I see lots on all streets, all angles.
Absolutely.
Dimensions, I'm not, I'm not a builder by any stretch of imagination, but I just think that this council needs to have more input when it comes to those critical calls of lots with 16, even 10,000. That's kind of, that's a lot of square footage.
Sure.
And sometimes developers are very creative, much smarter than I am. And if they had a lot for 10,500 square foot, I'm pretty sure they could figure out how to put a house on it if they had the proper setback and all that. I'm just saying. So, I just say, in this body, I mean, something 3,500, 4,500, I can understand that. These, I was under the impression that these abutter auctions were lots that weren't buildable. These are, these lots, these three lots, if we're not going to pass this one, these are very buildable lots.
Buildable, but not feasible.
Bobby, I don't know. I'm not, you know, you're making that call. I mean, you're, I mean, are you a certified builder or architect, an engineer? You're making calls that I think builders are very clear. We need to take a ride through Springfield. I'm very serious. There are narrow lots, there are wide lots, there, you know, depth. I'm just saying.
Absolutely.
At least give folks the opportunity, especially with this body, that 16,000 square feet, that's a lot of, that's a lot of lot.
Anyone else on the motion? Motion made by Counsel Edward, seconded by Counsel Walsh, to send this matter to the Economic Development Subcommittee chaired by Counsel Gomez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do ayes have it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 13, Mr. Clerk.
Economic Development. Economic Development. Item number 13 is the second and second step for the mobile food truck ordinance. Just as a point of information, item number 14, the occupancy manual. I did some research. That item is not appropriately before this body. That's an administrative document produced by DPW. Whatever in the occupancy manual must be consistent with what's in the ordinance and what is in state law. Therefore, the city council doesn't have to vote on the occupancy manual.
No vote necessary on item number 14. And so, we're here for a second and third step for item number 13.
Mr. Signoli.
Good evening, councilors. At the meeting two weeks ago, we voted first step for the new food truck ordinance. Just to remind you, the ordinance, as submitted, three items were changed. We changed the downtown locations from 12 to 16, eight in Lyman and Caner Street and eight at Riverfront Park. We added Caner Street, excuse me, to the, in addition to Lyman Street, and we modified the fees from, to a $75 permit fee and $150 a quarter.
Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none? Counsel Ash.
I believe there's an abutter to this ordinance is here, is what, and/or his council is here. Would it be possible for one or both of them to address the council before we vote on this matter?
Mr. Clerk, please advise.
The council can hear from members of the public at its discretion.
Without objection. Is there anyone, anyone specific you would like to hear from? Counsel Ash?
Objection. Hard to hear you from back there. My name is Dr. David.
One second. There's an objection on the floor by Counsel Williams. So, no, so we won't expect. So, the clerk has advised that Counsel Ash can speak on the matter. However, if there is an objection from the council, we cannot hear from the public.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to be clear to the council. I'm not trying to be flying the ointment. I know there's been a lot of work done around this issue, and I know that people are anxious to get started, and I fully understand and comprehend that. However, I do feel that we owe abutters and property owners who are going to be directly affected, you know, potentially by this ordinance, to be heard. And so, it's, you know, my desire for them, at least to talk to the council, if not at this venue, perhaps in a, by way of a meeting. And so, I would make a motion that we refer this to the appropriate subcommittee.
So, the Young Professional Committee has already been dissolved, and so, if this matter goes to committee, I would assume we will send this to the General Government Committee. Or Maintenance and Development has already met. Okay, so, so there's a motion on the floor by Counsel Ash to send the matter to committee. This will go to the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Rook. All those in favor say aye.
No.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On sitting, item number 13 to committee, Counsel Edwards. No. Counsel Allen, absent. Counsel Rook. Yes. Counsel Gomez.
No.
No. Counsel Walsh. No. Counsel Marcus Williams. No. Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Twigs, absent. Counsel Shea.
No.
No. Counsel Fenton.
No.
No. Counsel Hurst. No. Counsel Bud Williams. No. Counsel Ramos.
No, not sufficient. Motion fails.
Mr. President, I request a reconsideration at our next meeting on this matter.
We haven't taken a vote yet on the item, and so...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Jump to the...
So, what is before us now, right now, is the second and third step. Is there any other, are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none? Counsel Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. There you go. Thank you, Chris. On Lyman and Caner Street, just so I can be clear, the proposed placement on Lyman Street is across from the entrance of the Amtrak station, right?
Basically, Lyman, excuse me, Lyman and Caner, Lyman between Dwight and Main and Caner, the whole stretch, any of the parking spaces that are legal parking spaces can be applied for.
All right, and then, north on Caner, so basically, the state building would be kind of the area that we're proposing.
Correct.
It wouldn't be across the street where the residence, the residential building like Silverbrook, wouldn't be down that half at all.
Correct.
It would be more towards, in the direction of Dwight Street.
Correct.
All right, just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Counsel Rook.
Just a quick question. I know it's Dr. Pat, on the state. Any of the business owners and property owners consulted down in the district where the food trucks are going to be located?
We had, I'm going to wait for Counsel Williams to, we had a dozen or so subcommittee meetings, and all of them, I know through the bid and through the Young Professionals Subcommittee, reached out to basically all of the abutters in the area down there, both Worthington Street, Lyman, Canor, because I know at the, at least two of the meetings, we had four or five different business people at those meetings. So, everybody was reached out to, wasn't done through us, but I know it was done through the various groups.
Would it send a million dollars to the property owners?
I don't know exactly how they did it. I know they contacted directly many of the businesses because they wanted to get them to the meetings, and I know many of the businesses came to the meetings.
Dr. Pat, you should send a dollar. Counsel. We're in the middle of a discussion. Just should be enough to get rid of the businesses.
So, Rule 20 reads, "All orders, resolutions, and ordnance authorizing the expenditure or payment of money or instituting programs that may require the expenditure of funds or accepting permissive legislation passed by the general court, which shall involve the expenditure or payment of money, shall be first referred to the city controller for his cost analysis opinion." So, because this will be an ordinance that will result in the receipt of payment, then this will be a Rule 20 situation, correct, Mr. Clerk? It has to fall under the Rule 20.
Yeah, under Rule 20, the language of the rule statute has to do with expenditures of funds. Those are outlays from the city.
From the city.
Correct.
And so, Rule 20 would not apply to this ordinance?
I would defer to...
I'm asking that the Vol. Rule 20s, there are property owners down there who are investing or have invested, I think, in silverware. Some of the properties, Dr. Peck.
You can't close that door.
They have had an opportunity to express their opinions, to make the legislation stronger or better. I would like to give them an opportunity. I'm in favor of the ordinance, but I think democracy should allow it, as it is so to speak. What if they don't purchase any additional properties down there because they could trust it to be? And the city loses an opportunity for investment purchases. That's the purpose of my request. I'm not trying to be difficult or distingue. You know, Dr. Peck has purchased a large piece of property down there. That's a lot of money. I thought they ought to provide...
So, the way the rules read, Rule 20 only applies to expenditures for the city.
You can invoke the date.
There is, but it has to apply, it has to be, you can't invoke Rule 20 on any, anything that comes before the council. It has to fall within the rules, and so, there's a provision in there that says if it does, if it does not fall within the rules, then the president shall not halt debate. So, what I'm trying to decide is whether or not this falls under Rule 20. I'm going to ask for Attorney Davis to weigh in. Why don't we take a brief recess, and we'll reconvene in a couple of minutes? Too many recesses. All right, Counsel Rook has asked to invoke Rule 20. And so, I'm going to ask for a legal opinion out of the Law Department, has had an opportunity to review. I'm going to ask Attorney Davis for a legal opinion.
So, after reading Rule 20, the plain language of the statute states that it's regarding expenditures or payments of money. That's the plain language, and there's no expenditures or payments of money here, so I would say it's not applicable. I know, it's buzzing. No, it's okay. So, reading the plain language of the statute, it says, "which shall involve this expenditure or payment of money." It is my legal opinion that the plain language of the statute is for expenditure or payment, and there's no expenditure or payment in this case. So, I would say Rule 20 doesn't apply.
All right, after considering the Law Department's opinion, I'm going to rule that Rule 20 does not apply to this situation, and so, debate will continue. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Counsel Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would actually like just to make a motion for an amendment that was an oversight in terms of the permitting fees, and Mr. Signoli could speak to that.
Thank you, councilors. In the ordinance, we reference permit fees and quarterly fees in two different locations, and at the last meeting, I mentioned Section 279-47. It also appears in Section 279-56. In the document, it talks about two different entities. It talks about downtown, and then it talks about the rest of the city, and the permitting fees appear in two different sections of the document. So, I just wanted to make sure that it applied to both of those sections.
All right. There's a motion for an amendment made by Counsel Williams, seconded by Counsel Gomez. All those in favor of the amendment say aye. Opposed? Do ayes have it? Is there any further discussion? Counsel Rook.
A motion for immediate reconsideration at the next meeting.
At the moment, there isn't anything to reconsider. We have yet to vote on the matter.
At the appropriate time.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? This is on second and third step. This is on second and third step. I'm sorry, we cannot take testimony at this time. Second step will be a voice vote, Mr. Clerk. All those in favor of invoking Rule 22(c)(2) to take the matter up in one vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do ayes have it?
Under normal city council procedure, there are required to be three steps for the passage of an ordinance. We took first step at last meeting. At this meeting, there are required to be two steps, second and third step. Under Rule 22(c)(2), those steps can be combined into one step, so by invoking 22(c)(2), there's only one vote required on the passage of the ordinance.
Are we ready for vote? So, this is on, this is on item number 13. Counsel Williams.
We just passed second step?
We have not taken any steps yet. There was a request from the president to invoke Rule 22(c)(2). Rule 22(c)(2) of the municipal rules state that any item that would take more than one step can be voted on in one step. So, this, as an ordinance, would be a three-step item.
We've taken the first step, Bobby.
We took first step at the last regular meeting.
You've taken first step.
Correct.
Have we taken second step tonight?
We have not taken second step.
If you can have second step, before you take third step, you can have a meeting before you do third step. If so be, if someone moving on down, and you went forward to the rest of the people, you can take second and third steps. Come over the line.
That is correct.
That's correct. So, if you take second, then a meeting can come back and take third.
At this time, the body has already voted to invoke Rule 22(c)(2), so there will be no third step. This will ordain the ordinance. The vote right now would be to ordain the ordinance. There is no second step. Second step and third?
Second and third.
We voted to combine second and third step.
Oh, you voted.
All right. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On ordaining the ordinance, the mobile food truck ordinance, Counsel Edwards.
This is when the passage of the...
This is full passage of the ordinance.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen, absent. Counsel Rook.
No.
No. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ash. No. Counsel Twigs, absent. Counsel Shea.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Bud Williams. Yes. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, ordinance is enacted.
Mr. Clerk, please advise.
If there's, yes. So, this item will appear in the next meeting under reconsideration.
And so, the vote that we just took could essentially be overturned, could be overturned.
That's right. That's fine.
All right, so...
Mr. President.
Counsel Edwards.
So, we passed, essentially, we passed it at the next meeting, during the time between now and the next meeting, the gentlemen who have questions are now afforded an opportunity to discuss it with whoever they choose and have a meeting, correct?
Correct.
And then, after that meeting, we can come back and either amend it or not amend it, but just, or leave it in place.
What will come back before this body is whether or not it wants to ordain the ordinance.
Okay, but it would afford them an opportunity to discuss it and ask the questions that they thought should have been asked tonight, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And that doesn't require a vote from us, just as invoking...
His request...
Automatically triggers it. No need for anybody else to say any word.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, that gives...
What will come back before this body is whether or not it wants to ordain the ordinance.
Okay. But it'll afford them an opportunity to discuss it and ask the questions that they thought should have been asked tonight, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And that doesn't require a vote from us, just his invoking of the...
His request...
Automatically triggers it. No need for anybody else to say any word.
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. The last item on the agenda...
It's not, it's not going to committee. Any committee can meet on it, but this item has not been sent to any committee.
Counselor Williams, so the question is what committee? Well, Counselor Rook is correct, and any, any committee can hold a meeting on the matter.
I'm only chair of the dark committee, so it ain't gonna be me.
So the, the ordinance will be under reconsideration for the, on the next agenda. Thank you.
All right. The last item on tonight's agenda is the air pollution ordinance sponsored by Counselor Edwards.
Before we begin, Counselor, I just got a reminder for everyone to turn on their microphones when you're speaking, and turn off your microphones when you're not speaking. Counselor Edwards?
Ladies and gentlemen, there has been a lot of controversy over issues related to air pollution in the city of Springfield. I have the pleasure and honor of serving as Chair of the Green Committee, and they have been meeting for a couple of years periodically on a monthly basis, and generally, as you know, there is a Climate Action Committee in the city of Springfield that is not a part of this, but that has triggered some funding. There's a lot of demonstrations and a lot of conversation about the environment. I'm putting forth a amendment to the city's ordinance related to air pollution. This ordinance would ban the burning of construction materials within the limits of the city, and if there's any concerns about its impact on issues that have been already adjudicated, litigated, or passed by this body, this has no effect on any business that has already gone through the process of facilitating their future use, and there is no facility, as it stands right now, in the city of Springfield that is, as I know, legally burning construction material. This essentially would guarantee that in the future, no other business could come into the city of Springfield and establish a facility that would burn construction material. And you know from, or you may remember from past debate, demonstration, and conversation within this chamber, that when they start to burn those types of material, arsenic and all types of chemicals that are carcinogenic, that are unhealthy for one's breathing, are impact emitted, and unlike when the oil spills, pipelines, and things like that, when those things occur, they generally can scoop it all up. When particulate matter is expelled into our air, there's no way for us to reclaim it. So it's when the mistakes happen, I mean, there's been a lot of controversy on a national level of the pipeline, and I think even last week, they mentioned that so many gallons of oil have already spilled. They'll dig up that soil, they'll try to reclaim it. Once it hits our air, it can't be contained. This is personal for me. Three days a week, I'm required to go to the pulmonary rehab facility at the Delosky Center on Main Street in Springfield. So I am one of those people who struggles to catch his breath on a consistent basis. We've had many conversations, and we've had many people talk in this chamber about the fact that here in Western Mass, we have some of the highest rates of asthma in the state. There should be no controversy around the passing of this, because it has no effect on existing businesses that are operating in the city, and it strictly bans future use of somebody coming into the city, or somebody changing the legal use of the facility as it was permitted. So I'm asking everybody to give consideration for this. I have no opposition of what's going to committee, but I see no reason for it to go to committee. This should be simply passed, because it's the right thing to do for our environment and for our own personal health. And let me assure you, I was not born with asthma, or COPD, or any other respiratory issues. But within the last four years, I've gotten to the point where my future may to be depended on a cadaver. So I'm gonna respectfully, once again, ask for support for the passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Second. Counselor Walsh?
A question on the amendment. Does the amendment change the fee structure?
This has not been the most easiest process for me to get through, and in fact, I've been working on this for almost probably over a year now, and there's been multiple questions as to, essentially, what we did was, we had the thought of doing this. The city of Greenfield passed an ordinance doing similarly. When I reached out to the Law Department, the Law Department suggested, and this is not a reflection of Attorney Davis, but the Law Department wasn't quite sure how it was supposed to work, so what I did was got a copy of the Greenfield ordinance and presented it to the Law Department, so that I, in my, I thought they could simply cut and paste it. I was advised they couldn't cut and paste it, because it was more difficult for the city of Springfield than what it would be if we were in the city of Greenfield. And now Attorney Davis, who is one of the architects of drafting what I proposed to you, is suggesting that it has to go to, Ms. Davis?
So as far as the control of air pollution within the city limits, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 111, regulates this. It has to go before a local board of health, and they have to refer it to Mass D E P. Mass D E P has to approve it, the regulation, and then it comes before the city council for approval. So if any action was taken on it tonight, it wouldn't go into effect, because Mass D E P hasn't approved the regulation yet.
Thank you for that explanation. My question was, the revised ordinance as amended, does it change, has there been a fee, is there a fee structure in place? Does this change it?
A fee structure? I'm sorry.
Well, this says whoever violates any order, rule, or regulation, shall be punished. First offense, not less than $1,000, not more than $5,000. Subsequent offense by fine, not less than $5,000, not more than $10,000. I mean, I'm, I think that's a huge fee.
Right. But that's regulated by the state. That's actually within the statute, and it's a required portion of the regulation.
This language already exists?
Yes. This regulation is straight from Massachusetts General Laws. It's required in every regulation for air pollution within the locality.
I think that's an awful lot of money, and I don't like the word punished. I would like to see that changed to fined. That kind of makes me think of people in stocks. I don't like that. I can't support this.
Our Wayman, Attorney Williams, Wilson. So if we pass this tonight, we do have the option of passing this, correct? And then at that point, it would be sent to the Mass D E P, or Board of Health? Is that correct?
I'd have to defer to the Law Department as to the legal effectiveness of the ordinance, but if you were to, it's on tonight for first step. If we're to pass first step, it would go through the normal procedures for ordaining an ordinance, and if it were to be ordained, it would be ordained and be a part of the city's local laws. However, whether or not it went through the appropriate process to have appropriate, to have a legal effect, I would have to defer to the Law Department. In other words, whether or not the, it's, it came before the city council's an ordinance, so you can follow your normal ordinance procedures to enact it. However, is it legal? Did it go through the appropriate legal channels under the statutes? That would be a question for the Law Department, and if there were a challenge as to the legality of it, those issues would be resolved by the Law Department.
Well, actually, that's part of what I've been trying to get through, and as you know, we've had some conversations, Attorney Davis knows, because haven't had to get clarity. And so the thing is, this is not necessarily out of frustration, but it got to a certain point where, because I could not get that type of clarity, it was for, I thought it was the most prudent thing, prudent thing to do, is to bring it before the council, see if we get the first step passed, and then let's the lawyers decide where it could go, because as we have discussed, private lawyers are saying it doesn't have to go, and I haven't, to this point, until tonight, had not gotten a concrete answer as to whether from the city's law department, whether or not it did have to go to the Public Health Committee. But actually, so you said Public, the Health Commissioner, but up until tonight, it was always described as a question as whether it had to go to the Public Health Committee. Is that accurate? And I assumed those are two different entities, but shared by the same person.
Yeah, again, I would defer to the Law Department, but I mean, the point I'm trying to, or the informational point that I'm trying to get across is that, right now, it's in the process to be enacted as an ordinance, which it would be if the council went through all its steps. The further issue as regards, and I think a good example would be the foreclosure ordinance. The city council enacted the ordinance. The ordinance went into effect as one of the city's laws. However, it was ultimately ruled to be illegal. That's a legal question as to whether or not the body had the power to do that. That's a legal question for the Law Department. If you went through all the city council procedural steps of enacting an ordinance, there's that potential for really every ordinance for it to be later ruled to be invalid, legally invalid.
So tonight, my request of passage of this would only be for first step?
Correct.
And then at that point, the Law Department would determine whether or not Mass, the Committee on Public Health, or whether the Health Commissioner has the option, the authority to make a ruling on it. But this body's job tonight would either be to pass, or to fail, or to deny first step, correct?
Well, as with any...
By choice.
Yeah. As with any ordinance, the city council has the power to enact an ordinance. The Law Department provides you with advice as to whether or not it is a legal ordinance, and then the city council would take that information into account when it votes to enact or not enact any particular ordinance. Ultimately, outside of the city council's hands, if someone were to oppose the ordinance or the law and say that the law is invalid, that was something that will be determined by a court. And the Law Department, and I don't mean to put words in its mouth, the Law Department's advice is that, under the current process, they believe that a challenge would be, that it would not be legal unless it goes through certain steps for the Public Health Council.
Okay, but so, and then the final question is, my colleague's concern over the fines is not something that we can do, because the fines are set by state law, if we, in fact, enact it as an ordinance and passed by the city. Those stand, the establishment of the fines are not, are part of our purview. They are by the state statutes, correct?
I would, I'll give you a long-winded answer, so I'll, I'll give you a short-winded and a long-winded answer. The short answer is, I defer to the Law Department as they looked at the statutes. I haven't looked at the statutes. However, when any commission department of the city wants to enact fines, those fines have to come before the city council for approval, and the city council sets the fines for any board, commission, or city department. State law sometimes has ceilings and floors for fines, and that would be something that the Law Department would have more information on.
Okay. Thank you.
So Attorney and Mr. Clerk, that is my concern. That was gonna be my question, even though you stated, Mass General Law, does the community have the opportunity to set the fines to something that they think is more reasonable?
I would have to reread the statute, but as far as reading substantive requirements of Section 31(c), it says, "Section 31(c) contains a penalty provision that should be included in the regulation, either in its entirety or by reference." This is from, this is actually a guide from Mass D E P as far as air pollution, so it's required to be in the ordinance as it states in the statute. So we don't have control. It's statutory. It's by, it's a decision by the state.
So you just said it's a guide, though?
No.
So we have to have, if we pass this, we have to have the exact same language as the state regarding the fine and the amount of the fines. The city council cannot adjust it to something that they think is fairer for our community?
No. The site is Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 111, Section 31(c). I can send that to the council if they'd like, just for informational purposes.
Well, I'm looking at this, and I don't know, quite know who would violate it and who would have to be punished, but I think it's $5,000 or $10,000 is pretty hefty, particularly if it's an individual.
Is there any other questions from the council?
Sir, anyone else who would like to speak on this matter before we take first step? Seeing none. All those in favor of taking first step and referring this matter to the Committee on Ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it? First step is, has passed? Is there any further business before the council, Mr. Clerk?
I have no further business before this council.
Seeing none, our next meeting is a hearings meeting on May 22nd. Thank you.
Go Celtics.